Good evening. The November 21st, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting that everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices and put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mair, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, my boss, and others. It is Thanksgiving this week, and I think sometimes we as adults overcomplicate what Thanksgiving is. So to put us in a fresh perspective, I've chosen a poem written for preschool students. The poem is simply entitled "Thanksgiving." First, we give thanks for the food that we are given. Then we give thanks for the houses that we live in. Then we give thanks for the sun that shines above. But mostly, we give thanks for the people we love. Would you bow with me, please? Lord, thank you for the roofs up above us, the safe places where we sleep, the food on our tables, and the shoes on our feet. For love and life we have and our fine families, thank you, Lord, for your blessings on us. Amen. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Dr. Mayer?
With the exception of Item C-10.1, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 21st, 2017 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion on this superintendent's recommendation?
Uh huh.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes five to zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 10th, 2017 School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Ms. King, moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 19th, 2017 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five to zero. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums are due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's assistant. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
We have no speakers. Thank you. Sorry. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda Items C-6.1 through C-12.1, with the exception of Item C-7.3, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion, and Item C-10.1, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero. May I have a motion to approve Budget Resolution Number 5, Capital Projects Fund?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Mrs. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I did. When the money was put towards those buildings, Buildings 1 and 6, I believe it was, it was put there, I would think, for a very good reason, and so recent as September, in the five-year plan. And this whole thing still reminds me of children doing as they please and then asking for forgiveness. I give children many chances, but I don't give adults as many. I believe they've already had their time for lots of chances as a child. And it's fine that I'm outvoted on this, but I would like to see, because I fully expect that if all of the things needed to be replaced in the building that came up to the amounts that those buildings needed, as our vocational education program expands and we continue to use that section, and I understand district offices and school facilities have to have, they're under different guidelines for construction requirements and that sort of thing. But, you know, between the superintendent's budget or someplace else, I think we need to work a little harder to find this money for this project. It's, it's kind of like, it kind of reminds me of, a friend of mine told me a story once about, in the Air Force, the government used to have, be accused of, and we know the government does this, setting a budget, and the Air Force was famous for building the officers' quarters and all the amenities, sometimes a little golf course section off of the Air Force Base. And all of a sudden, they didn't have enough money for the runways. So they would come back for runway money because they purposely spent, because they wouldn't have gotten, nobody would have given them the money, had it been for officers' quarters. So they built the officers' quarters first, kind of a military thing they did. So that's what I see here. We, you know, I don't know whether, the explanation for why this budget was 50% exceeded itself by 50%, went from $400,000 and went up $200,000 more, either somebody totally underestimated this before they started, or they've added things to the project after they started. I don't know which one it was. But I'm not comfortable with moving Peter's money to pay Paul, and so for that reason, I will not be supporting this budget adjustment.
Any other discussion?
I think we've discussed this, and one of the things that we agreed that we would do this, the problem I have with it, if we do this one, are we going to do another one? And when I say that, we agreed to do it. But the problem I have with it, I just got the feeling that there's some other things floating around out here that I don't know about, and I have a hard time with not knowing these things. And this is what my big concern is, is because when you've been around as long as I am, I have, you'd know when something don't feel right. Mrs. Stacy got the same feeling I have, that we started at one point, and then we ended up at another point. Okay, but we discussed it at the work session, and we said that we were in the middle of something, and we did not want to stop it. So I'm going to support it simply because we agreed, but by the same token, I do feel that we need to make sure that this transparency is there, and we get this stuff ahead of time and don't change it. And the thing that really bothered me a little bit about the whole thing, I have people that have been working in this district for a long time, and they are very good at what they do, and they don't usually do stuff like this. They usually will come and say, hey, this is what it is, and bring it to the board. They don't usually do this. And I'm concerned about that as well, that if our board, we got people out there knowing, when I look at these guys and look at these young ladies that have been around for a long time, that know how this horse run, and when you see them running off the track somewhere, and nobody's saying whoa, and bringing back in, they need to come and tell us to do this. So this is what my concern is as well, is because I have people out there that's been doing this, and they've been very good at what they do. And they know the procedures of this school board better than we do. That's my little comment for the evening.
Ms. Boynton?
Just like Mrs. Stacy and Mr. Bobby, as you looked at the original budget for the MTI building for the remodel, we now have a difference. For the revision, was it was over $2,071 and over $1,000 on that, and so when a realtor gets you at the budget, and then you, it's a lot of money, so I'm just not going to vote for that right now, just because of the budget that we had. The original budget that we had, I really would like to have that, but look where we are, we're going to guide things around so too quick.
Maybe they can still fine tune it. Ms. King, do you have anything?
Well, I am going to support this tonight because we did have this work session, and we had discussed it in depth. And at the moment, at the time, we did agree to do that, and I think we also conveyed a very good message to the superintendent that we, you know, the way they present their information to us in the future, you know, we would prefer it another way. So I am going to follow through with what we had discussed, and I will vote for it.
Madam Superintendent, I hope you hear our concerns. I know that we've had a conversation and trust that we will, in the future, on new projects, have the scope of work before it gets started.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Would you like anybody to address you, from staff? I think that we're, I think we're good. I think we've discussed this project as much as possible. So with that in mind, I will now call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? And the vote passed, three to two. At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Mayer.
I request the chair declare good cause to discuss an appeal filed by the Southeast Marion Charter Academy.
I approve good cause.
Friday, November 17th, I received an email from Charter Schools USA, Southeast Marion Charter Academy, with notice they were appealing the board's denial of their application. Our reply to the appeal by Southeast Marion Charter Academy must be received by the Charter School Appeals Commission 30 days from receipt of this email. Now, that would be Sunday, December 17th. I originally had suggested to you Friday, December 15th, but in conversation with Mr. Gibbs, he said that it would be okay for Monday, the 18th of December, but that still creates a short window here. I am asking you to move forward, permitting Mr. Gibbs to format your comments when you denied this application into legal language and submit it to the commission. I'm confident your vote will be upheld in this appeal process, as we have had conversations with other districts who have been successful, some very recently. Now, this appeal was expected, as we had explained to you, and this is not a lawsuit, and any attempt to portray it as a lawsuit is incorrect. I'd like Dr. Grantham to provide you with some more detail on the timeline we must follow.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Board Members. Superintendent, this is Blackheder. Mr. Gibbs, first, Happy Thanksgiving. We are in the thankful season, and we are ready for some turkey, I believe. As our superintendent said, this past Friday, November 17th, Charter Schools USA made us where they were appealing the board's decision to deny their charter. We did expect them to do that. What does it mean to us? If we do nothing, then there is a charter school, charter school will be here. But because of the appeal, we want to give you as much information as you can. So I talked to Mr. Gibbs today, and I'm going to go through this, and I put them in three different steps, so we'll call them tiers, and this is how the appeal works. We received the appeal Friday, and the due date is December 18th. So I'm not going to read this aloud to you, you can certainly file that, but that is step one, that something has to be sent back by December 18th. Step two, there's not a date on it, and I'll explain why there's not a date. We wait for them. They tell us when they will have a conversation with us, and they give us at least seven days' notice. And you see, I bolded the 10 minutes as well, that's kind of how that works. We have 10 minutes, they have 10 minutes, and then they'll make a recommendation to the State Board of Education. Step three, there is a due date, and that is 90 calendar days after Friday, which is February 15th. So this is just information for the board, so to kind of encapsulate, they did file an appeal. Here's the timeline, here's our information to you. Mr. Gibbs and I had a brief conversation this afternoon, he's kind of your legal counsel, but we wanted to give you these dates, so you're aware that we do have to meet these guidelines and these timelines in order to accommodate what the law says. Mr. Gibbs?
If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions for Dr. Grantham?
No.
May I have a motion directing Attorney Gibbs to oversee the response to the appeal filed by the Florida Charter Educational Foundation, Inc., and the Southeast Marion Charter Academy to the Charter School Appeals Commission?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign? And the motion passed, four to one. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $16,334.42, $2,864.42 to Maplewood Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation, $13,470 to Marion County Public Schools Curriculum and Instruction Department from the Felburn Foundation? May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. If there is no discussion, we will vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And the vote passed, five to zero. And Ms. King, you haven't been able to do this in a while, would you like to thank them tonight?
I sure would. On behalf of the school board, we would like to thank everyone that donated to Marion County Public Schools this evening. It is the week of Thanksgiving, and we are so ever thankful for your generous donations. Thank you.
At this morning's organizational meeting of the school board, there was a tie in selecting a vice chair, as only four board members were present. The nominees for vice chair were Mrs. King and Ms. Boynton. As a result of the tie, the nominations were tabled until this evening's meeting. At this time, I am turning the gavel over to Dr. Mayer during the voting process for vice chair. Thank you. May I have a motion to remove from the table the selection of a vice chair? So moved. Ms. McCall?
Second.
All in agreement, aye?
All in agreement, aye.
Remove. And that passes, five to zero. The first of two nominations on the floor is the nomination of Mrs. King for vice chair by Ms. McCall. All in favor of Ms. King for vice chair, state aye. All those opposed, state nay.
So who are the options?
The second is Ms. Boynton, and she was nominated by Mr. James.
Do we have any discussion about this at all?
We did this.
Okay, then I'll go without discussion, that's fine.
If she wants to discuss it, she can, the board's free to do so, if you guys want to open the floor up for discussion.
That's okay, yeah, that's fine. I'll talk to you about it later.
It's the board's, I mean, you can open, it's just like any other agenda item, so if you guys want to open it up for discussion, you can open it up.
Okay, open for discussion.
I'm sorry I wasn't here this morning. It was kind of a fluke where my calendar, I thought it was a mistake that this was on the calendar, because I thought everybody was, I didn't realize everybody would be here today. So I just changed my calendar to the 28th till next Tuesday, because it would be on the same morning as a board meeting, like we're accustomed to doing, and anyway, so that was dumb of me, a really stupid assumption that I made. I tried to call the district office and didn't get an answer, so I assumed nobody was here. So anyway, that's what happened. But I do support Mrs. Boynton, because she was a chair, she was a great chairman, but Kelly King was a great chairman also. But Ms. King's just moving out of that position, and I still hold Mrs. Boynton up on a pedestal for your support for parental rights. You are the strongest school board member ever. To stand up for parents in the way that you stood up for them, out of it, came a committee that a lot of great people worked for, but you were brave to stand for parents in an environment that was very unreceptive to it. But you stood strong, and you, against the establishment, you stood for parents. I also, I have another reason, because when people have an illness, I believe sometimes it takes time, and I hope that my support for you will give you extra energy to really work hard, to overcome that nasty little stroke that hurt my friend and my colleague. So, and Ms. King, you were great also. It's just a personal thing I have for that parent committee, and I hate it, I wish I could do a flip of the coin, but Mrs. Boynton, I'm just loyal to those who do great things for children and parents, for parent rights, in an environment that was very hostile towards that at the time. It took a lot of strength. And I want to thank her for her courage and reward her for that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor of Ms. King for vice chair, state aye. All those opposed, state nay.
Nay.
Motion failed, three to two. The second of two nominations on the floor is the nomination of Ms. Boynton for vice chair by Mr. James. All in favor of Ms. Boynton for vice chair, state aye. All those opposed, state nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, three to. The new vice chair for the school board of Marion County, Florida, is Ms. Boynton. I will now return the gavel to Chair McCall. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Boynton.
Thank you.
The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, December 7th, 2017, at 9 o'clock AM. The purpose of the work session is to review footsteps to brilliance, new diversion program, I'm sorry, to review footsteps to brilliance, new diversion program, clean slate, annual Public Education Foundation report, and recommended textbook titles for adoption. At this time, I want to ask for board reports and concerns, and we will start with Mrs. Stacy.
Okay. After a lot of thought, a couple of years of thought, in fact, when Dr. Mayer was running for school superintendent, my main drive for supporting her was that she promised me for school superintendent, my main drive for supporting her was that she promised me she would help support the appointed superintendent in our district. We are the second-largest district in the United States to operate from a unelected superintendent. Small districts can work fine with an elected superintendent because the community, there's like just one or two high schools, and it's just all real small, and everybody in the community knows what's going on. But we have a district sprawling with retirees and plight and people who don't really know what's going on in the school system. And people can come in with political PACs and kind of with a little money and say whatever they want to say. And the people out on the court or don't know whether it's true or not true, we could end up with a tractor driver as a superintendent if the right political hack was writing the literature. And Dr. Mayer has, is doing a fantastic job. This is nothing, she knows that this is a discussion we had a long, long time ago, she and I. And I've thought about it long and hard. And I think today, what kind of pushed me over the envelope was a person that was involved with one of the PACs that supported her posted that some of the school board members could end up running Dr. Mayer and her team off if, if we didn't, I guess, tone it down or whatever. That evidently holding people's feet to the fire, we're being threatened, and I've been threatened if I didn't support things that Dr. Mayer said by political hacks, that oh, this is going to happen and that's going to happen. And it's just people who look for relevance and they buy friends with their money. And I'm tired of this being so political. I was hoping that the politics would come out of it over time, but there's still people threatening, if you don't do this and don't do that, then this is politically what's going to happen. The politics needs to come out of this position. When we run our school system, we run it for three years, and the fourth year, the superintendent's campaigning. And it's very difficult. It drives wedges between employees that work in the district. Then when the new superintendent is seated, we have employees who, you know, are demoted, promoted, and then it sews on, and it could go, it all could happen again in four years. And I was talking to a couple of the county commissioners a while back, and I said, what would you do if your county administrator was appointed? And they said it would be complete chaos. And I found an old newspaper article when Dr. Mayer was introduced to the community as seeking the appointment for the election, I think it was around December, two years ago. And in it, she said that she hoped to calm down some of the chaos between the elected superintendent and the elected school board. The chaos continues because it's just so political. If the superintendent, if we, you know, if this community and the community will have to vote, the school board will have to vote for the people to vote. It will be up to the people. We would vote to put it on the ballot, and it would be whatever date, you know, we probably need to workshop this and talk about it if anyone's interested. I don't know if anyone else is interested in the appointed superintendent. But it's something that, if I was voting today for an appointed superintendent, I would support Dr. Mayer. I think she's doing an excellent job. I think she's working hard and her team. That is who I would support. But when I hear political hacks in the community talking, if the school board doesn't do this or that, they're going to run Dr. Mayer and her team off, okay, let's say anything like that should happen. We would have a sudden election, which no telling who we would end up in office. And we've just been through that story enough times. So if anyone's interested in having that discussion, I guess we could have a workshop, Madam Chairman, and talk about it. But I just don't know if anyone else is interested besides me. I may be the only one interested. So just leave it at that for now.
I believe that, isn't it under the Constitutional Review Committee right now that it would come up under the Constitution for a vote for all counties to have an elected superintendent?
But it might not pass. So I think we need, I think there are, like Martin County right now, will be voting in the next election for it to be changed in their, in their district also. And because it has to get sixty percent of the votes of the people to do a constitutional amendment on that. So.
Okay. Let me just step in a little bit. This is one of the things that I have been talking about for a long time, that we, that we really do a workshop on doing an appointed superintendent. Let me tell you the reasons why. The reason why is simply because the district is moving in the right direction. I don't have a problem with it. If you look over there, that's an appointed attorney, and we didn't do a bad job.
We did really good.
Okay. When I look, and when I look at this thing, if we are moving in the right direction, and we need to go full-blown on this thing, and, and when I say that, I just hope that people understand where we are. Okay? As much as we talk about moving our school district in the right direction, I know one thing. If we look across that road, look across this thing over here, we did the right thing and brought it up and appointed, we bought us, got us an attorney, and all of us agreed that that was the best plan for the job. You know, and this is what I think progress means. And when you, when you are administering a district the size of Rhode Island, then we need to have a person have a single force. We should have a, our vision should be, and our administration and the board should be a single pointed entity with a clear vision and clear direction. And how do we do that? We do that by embracing the idea that we're moving into the twenty-first century, in which we are. And when you look at all this, even the legislature is, is, is working in that direction. But do we have to wait for Tallahassee or somebody to tell us we need to do something right? And so I'm for it. And, and I appreciate Ms. Stacy bringing it up because I was going to bring it up. Because it was time, and we didn't discuss this. It's just time.
So are we in consensus that we should at least do a workshop to explore the possibility of an appointed superintendent?
And look at a timeframe for us to get it on the ballot.
I used to not think like that, and by now, I really understand why we need to do that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Great. And Mr. James, you can continue.
Okay. I just want to, want to take this time just to tell everybody, look at the things and look at the people that are around you that you're in love with. Because it's one of those things when, when life is so uncertain. And when I say this to you, I want to thank all the people that have been sending me cards and letters and references to my family and wanting to invite us to come out and eat some turkey dinner and stuff like that. We will survive. We will go through the holidays, and my wife will be in ICU for the holidays, but we will survive. And I just want to make sure everybody that's out there, take the time to tell the person that's important to you how much you love them, because that's a big issue. And that's my thought for today.
Thank you, Mr. James. That's a beautiful thought. Ms. Boynton?
You know, this last week, we were at Vanguard, and we had Thanksgiving food for us, and it was, it was so good. And I really just to say about that, because there's sometimes when you, you know, you go back to the, other, the other schools, but when it came to Vanguard, and it really gave us a really, I wish I had been there. You would have been like me, like, wow, they really did, very, very good food. So I just wanted to say that at Vanguard, thank you all. And I want everybody to have a great Thanksgiving. Okay? Thank you.
Ms. King?
Yeah, we did. We had a great morning, afternoon at Vanguard High. They provided a wonderful lunch, and it was also neat because they were showing us the biodegradable plates that we're moving to, so it's better for our earth. So that was pretty interesting. I would like to say congratulations to our new chair and vice chair, and I wish you guys a wonderful and successful year. And I just want to tell everyone, happy Thanksgiving, and may everyone have a blessed Thursday and meal, and enjoy your family.
Mr. Gibbs?
I do have a couple of issues tonight. Fortunately, lawsuits are rearing their heads. First, the charter appeal, I'm going to look to move that to outside counsel, who has previously handled the charter denials for this county. It's Mr. Tom Gonzalez. He's agreed that if we decide to push it outside, that he'll do it for the same terms that you guys have done it in the past with him. I think the last one was in two thousand thirteen. So I just kind of want some direction on the charter repeal.
Everybody okay with that?
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, no, Tom Gonzalez is very good, and he's well-known around the state. He's got a great reputation. He attends FSBAA when he can. He's also got other matters that he's handling in Tallahassee in the upcoming future, so hopefully we can help piggyback on some of his work up there, so.
Everybody okay?
Did we have an idea of how much it's going to cost?
It's the same, he said he'll do it for the same terms. I haven't pulled the contract to work it up yet. As soon as you guys give me the consensus, I'll get that, and then I'll bring it back for the approval of the board, so. I do believe his rate was one seventy-five is what my staff told me, so.
But no estimate of overall?
Overall, my, as I, I think, I believe I emailed everybody, my overall estimate for the first phase was four to six thousand, so I'm guessing around five. If you push it to DCA all the way, like the Indian River and the Palm Beach cases have gone, you can expect to probably spend around fifty grand total if you go that far. But the first phase will be, I'm guessing, right around five thousand.
Okay.
But then you'll have to make a decision as, if you lose, you'll have to decide whether you want to go forward to appeal it further. If you win, then it'll be in their court, obviously, as to whether or not they appeal that decision.
Right. We in agreement to, Mr. Gibbs, that's your recommendation? Anything else?
Yes, I believe, I raised it before, the FEA lawsuit. As everybody knows, the FEA sued every district in the state, as well as the State Department of Education. The court has been very busy. The FEA actually filed a motion that was unopposed to delay service on the districts until the motion to dismiss was resolved, and some other issues were resolved by the court. The court denied that motion. So we, this week, I got in the mail the notice for waiver of service, and it's going to backdate to November fourteenth. I'm going to sign the waiver of service. That'll give us sixty days to answer, so our answer will be due in January.
What does that mean? What does that mean, waiver of service?
That means they don't have to serve us. When, they can send us a waiver of service under the rules, and if we say no, and we want you to serve us, then the board has to pay for the costs of their service on us, and we have to answer in twenty days after we get the service. If we waive service, the mailing will suffice as service on us, and we get sixty days to answer. So that gives us two months to answer, and we don't have to pay the bill of service. So you always waive generally when you get them, unless there's some strategic reason why you wouldn't. And since we're a government entity, we can't really evade service. All they have to do is drop it off at the front office, and we're served. So there's no reason not to waive it, and we get the sixty days. That's all that means. Now the question's going to be, I can do the answer as discussed. I've gotten registered and admitted to the northern district where this is filed. I can do the answer and file that. If it goes beyond a motion to dismiss and into litigation, then it's probably going to have to go to outside counsel. And as I mentioned before, there's a firm, Run Burger, up in Tallahassee. He's got twenty districts they're representing. They're going to spread the costs among those twenty districts. Tom Gonzalez, again, is representing, I think, five to six districts, and they're spreading those costs out there. If you want me to kick it out now, I can do that. If you want me to file the motion to dismiss upfront and see what the court does with it, we can do that and save costs on that end, and if we have to kick it later, we can kick it.
What do you recommend that we do?
It's really a board prerogative here. I mean, sixty days is enough time for me to file a motion to dismiss. I'm raising standard ground standing. We don't have the power to make the changes they're requesting in their lawsuit. We can't change the statute at all. We're, we're just a pass-through entity, so that's going to be the main basis of a motion to dismiss here. The court today dismissed the State Department of Education's motion to dismiss, so I don't know what the court's going to do with that. They were pretty harsh in their critique of the state's motion, so.
You know, Mr. Gibbs, I just gave you a compliment a few minutes ago. Now, what do you think we need to do?
Like I said, I mean, I can do.
No, I know, I know. What do you think we need to do? Just, do we need to do it or we don't do it?
Well, we got to answer, so I'm happy to do the motion dismiss. I love litigation.
Okay. You answered my question then.
Then are we in consensus for him to go ahead with the motion to dismiss?
Yeah. Okay. That's what I want.
All right.
And if, if it gets denied, I'll be back before you saying, the court didn't like my arguments, then we're going to have to kick it.
There we go. Now that's what I was looking for.
Anything else, Mr. Gibbs?
That's all I have, and hopefully we don't get any more of it.
Okay. Ms. Buckett, or anything? Dr. Mayer?
Yes, ma'am. First, we'd like to say thank you to Officer Buetti. I pronounced it right? Yes, ma'am. Well, thanks for being with us tonight. We understand that this isn't your normal route, so, but thank you for being with us. So maybe we'll have you back again. So keep us on your radar. And happy Thanksgiving to you and your family. Okay. I want to say congratulations to our new chair, Ms. McCall. I look forward to working with you. And previously mentioned something about running me off, and I just want to assure you, ma'am, that nobody runs me off. Nobody. Nobody. So me and, nobody. Nobody. So me and the six cats will be here for a very long time. So I look forward to, speaking of, there's cats for adoption. Me and the six cats, yes. And also, if, if you run me off board, I won't be here to give cupcakes. Exactly. So there you go. Because we have a birthday next week. Mrs. Stacy's birthday next week. And so, yes.
Tonight you forbid.
Well, yeah, well, if we waited till the next board meeting, that would be too long after. So we want to say happy birthday to you, Mrs. Stacy. And it's a Betty cake, of course. So I hope you enjoy, and I'm sure you'll be with the grands and just have an awesome time. So how nice to have Thanksgiving and all that with the family. So I hope you enjoy your special day. I wanted to share that last Wednesday, on the fifteenth, the chancellor of education, Mr. Lyons, was here, and he visited three of our schools and had a great visit. He visited MTI, Oak Crest, and Evergreen. And he gave us notice on this visit, but said he would be back on a future visit to follow up, and he would provide no notice on that visit. But he had a good visit with good comments on all three schools, some suggestions, and it was interesting because some of the suggestions we had had, like for MTI with one of the academies and the busing situation, we had already had a solution in mind. So when he brought it up, Ms. Beck, who was his tour guide for the day, or his docent, however you want to phrase it, had already said, well, this is what we're going to do. And so he was like, oh, great, you already have a plan for a solution. And with Ms. Beck's humor, she said, of course we do, Mr. Lyons. But I wanted to share two quotes, his exact quotes, when he called me on the phone, and he was talking about our new administrative team at Oak Crest. While he had great things to say about all three schools, but these particularly stuck with me. His exact quote was, "I love, love, love," and he did the emphasis, "what you're doing there." And he said, "That admin team blew me away." So I wanted to make sure that the public knew that great things are happening. We have great people in great spots for the right reasons, doing great things for kids. So I wanted to share that. I also would like, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, to say I am thankful for a lot of things. But one thing is, my fellow superintendents, I thought I was the only weird one who watched other board meetings. Like I'll watch other districts' board meetings, but apparently they watch ours, too. And a few had reached out to say hello, and so I just want to say hello to them as well. And in the spirit of Thanksgiving, tonight's book, What a Wonderful World, because it is. It is, and there is always, always, always something to be thankful for, like having six cats. It's something wonderful. So let's read this together. And it's beautiful. The illustrations are simply stunning. So, "I see trees of green, red roses too. I see them bloom for me and you. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world." Look, look, there's Louis Armstrong. "I see skies of blue and clouds of white. The bright blessed day, the dark sacred night. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world." "The colors of the rainbow so pretty in the sky are also the faces of people going by. I see friends shaking hands, saying, how do you do? They're really saying, I love you. I hear babies cry. I watch them grow. They'll learn much." They'll learn much more than I'll ever know. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Yes, I think to myself, what a wonderful world." And so, again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Mayer. Makes me want to sing.
No, you can just hear him.
Right, Kevin?
Where do we know it?
First of all, I would like to thank Kelly King for your remarkable job as chairman and for being a good mentor to me. So thank you very, very much. I had the pleasure today of taking four of my six grandchildren to the Fort King site. As many of you know, that is where my husband grew up, the McCall property, which is now the Fort King National Historic Site. And, uh, to show them the fort and it is absolutely magnificent, it is going to be a place for people to come to. Uh, it's almost completely done and we are taking many, many, many of our schoolchildren a week from Friday out there. So, um, they will, they will love it and I hope all of you will visit because it is a remarkable, remarkable site. So, um, just wanted to share that. Most of us will be at the Florida School Board Association Conference next week, um, there to learn, there to, um, be with others, to network, uh, with other school board members from the county. So we hope, uh, it will make us stronger leaders for you and for our students when we come back. And last but not least, I want to wish everybody a blessed, blessed Thanksgiving. Be safe if you're traveling, have a wonderful time and as Mr. James said, please tell those that you love, that you love them. Okay, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November 3rd, 2017. Ms. Flotketter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, ma'am.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 18-14 without educational services through the entire 2017-2018 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 18-15, JD 18-18, and JD 18-19 with educational services through the entire 2017-2018 school year? Ms. Boynton moved and seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. And the motion passed five zero. With there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Moved by Ms. Kelly. Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. The motion passed five to zero. The meeting is adjourned at 6:24.